Good evening and welcome to the August 13, 2014 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since 5:30 discussing contractual and personnel matters. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with introductions.
Michael Cooper.
Joanne Cunningham.
Lynn Lindhart.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Wijssinger.
Diane Stever.
Christine Beck.
And Judy Keough.
Next, the agenda item is the approval of the minutes, the minutes of the July 1, 2014 regular board meeting, and the minutes of the August 7, 2014 special board meeting where the board had a retreat. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Any knows? That carries. Student Senate, I don't believe we have anyone from the Student Senate here tonight. They're still enjoying their summer vacation, but at the next meeting, I'm sure we'll have someone. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Downey. Summer's ever ongoing, but it seems like it's much shorter with only three more weeks until we kick off the start of the 14-15 school year. I know construction is in full swing, so I'll leave that for our presentation. One of the things, the school is going to become very busy next week as we start to have return of students for extracurricular activities start up next Monday. And also, I want to commend Kathy Johnson, as well as the entire ESY program here in the district. They're culminating their summer, but they had a wonderful talent show today. A lot of people came out to support our students who, although they face challenges, really make it look like they're facing no other challenge than any other student in the district, as they've delivered a wonderful performance for their parents, teachers, staff, and friends, and I want to thank them for inviting me, so. One of the things that I'd like the board to consider maybe later, it doesn't have to be right now, but there's been the ongoing issue of testing in New York State. And one of the things we've tried to do over the past year is look at how we could reduce some of the impacts of testing on our students. And I think, you know, on behalf of Ms. Monroe, all of our instructional staff and our administration, we've tried to address that as best possible last year with eliminating some of the pre-tests and putting in different platforms of how we would do our evaluation and assessment. But in light of this past year, one of the things that the state has asked us to do is find ways that we could also try to minimize testing as well. And talking with my administrative team over the time, we look at the amount of testing that we do during the year, and the state's guidelines around, you know, a child should not be tested more than, I believe, 1 percent, that we have to take some serious consideration into how we offer field tests here in New York State, as well as how we use them in the district. One of the things as superintendent, sometimes you have to make difficult decisions or difficult choices, and what I'd like the board to discuss, so that it can help guide that choice, is the amount of testing that we do for the required testing, 3 through 8, as well as the Regents level, have field testing questions embedded in them. That what I would ask the board to consider at this point, and I think our administrative team would support, is that we move forward for the coming year, that we eliminate all field testing unless we are compelled and directed to directly do it under commissioners' regulations or the law, and that we honor education, not just about testing, but we focus our education on taking the time for education, not additional testing above and beyond our assessments. So if the board can maybe have a discussion a little bit later about that, I think that would help give us some guidance as we set forth on 2014, and we make sure that we adhere to Bethlehem being one of the leaders, and also maintaining our rich rigor that we have here throughout the grade levels. So that concludes my report at this point, as well as further discussion to follow.
Do we want to have the discussion on the field test right now?
With that introduction, it feels appropriate to continue.
Yeah, I'll start.
Okay.
Whoop, whoop. Really good news. I think this is an issue that I, as a parent, have heard a lot about from other parents in the district, and there's been a ton in the media, and I applaud, I guess, the state of New York first for giving districts direction, but also the district administration for jumping at the opportunity to really look at the testing burden and figuring out, you know, can we eliminate the field testing? Do we really need to do it? I guess my question would be, just for the education of parents watching in here tonight, what proportion, is this a meaningful change as far as the testing burden on kids? You know, how big of, you know, of relief does this offer, I guess?
One of the things is, as you look at it over 3 through 8, as well as the Regents testing, I think on average in Regents testing, we're around 15 hours of assessment at, I believe it was the 4th grade, and I'll ask Ms. Monroe to jump in here.
So that's over a year, a school year?
Over the course of the year, that's how much, without including the field testing, and it's without including any type of double testing in the past year, just because of the newness of some of the common core tests, as well as the former Regents. But at the 3 through 8 level, I think we're up to around 13 and 1/2 hours to 12 and 1/2 hours of testing for our students on required assessments, and then on top of it, we have somewhere around an hour to an hour and a half at the most of additional field testing that also comes usually right at the end of the year, at a very crucial time for our staff and instructors.
So it's that testing that would be correct?
It would be just that.
Most of the field tests are, range anywhere from 40 minutes to 90 minutes, and all of our buildings had to field test this year, and they follow, except for the Regents, obviously, the other field tests are administered after the kids have already sat for the New York State test, and they range, starting in grade 3, from almost seven hours of regular required testing up to over 13 hours for grade 8, and that's in a very consolidated time period. So it, you know, it's not a huge relief, but it's at least one class period, some more than that.
Right.
And we also don't get any feedback, you know. Aside, we don't get, we don't get good data back from the state test, quite honestly, and we don't get anything back from the field testing.
So the question is, is why are we doing this? And for who, when we get no educational value, except potentially in the long run? I don't want to fault it, because there is some validity to try to make sure that tests are predictable and reliable and valid.
Like the testing company.
Yeah, but the problem is, is we work for the parents in the community of Bethlehem Central, which is the town of New Scotland and the town of Bethlehem, and we want to focus on our education. We are growing in our educational standing over the past three years, and we want to continue that, and we need to use our available time to try to make marks on education, is what we're trying to say.
That's good, and is there, are there other opportunities to continue to minimize testing in areas that don't provide value, or is this?
We would have to look at this. This is our first foray.
Okay, well, it's great, and I hope we do a good job of publicizing this, because I do think the public is going to be really happy about this.
We, I would like to say I'd rather keep to ourselves politely, just because this will become a potential issue that might need to be addressed by the board at future meetings, just because of our location, proximity, and connection with state education, as well as the legislative offices, although I think the latter will not be too impacted by it.
Can I ask a related question? Because I think, I think probably we would all be agreement of having somewhat, you know, having less testing, but with the other required tests, now they're releasing, as a result of action just, you know, last month or so, 50 percent of the test questions, and that is not helpful, because we're looking at pushing to get 100 percent of those. In fact, the commissioner wanted 100 percent, but the legislature wouldn't support him with, you know, with the funding to do that. But is there, I mean, I use, because you almost sound like there isn't value of receiving those questions and being able to analyze them, so that, you know, teachers can help improve their instruction.
Well, the releasing of the test questions, I mean, our teachers have already seen those test questions, who've administered them. The problem, the area of information we don't get back is how individual students did on all those specific test questions. So unless, as a classroom teacher, you can go back to your class and see, you know, Johnny or Suzie didn't perform well on these types of questions, it's hard to address those areas of need. So, you know, in the past, we used to get that student-by-student item analysis, and it was broken into this group standards, so you could really use that data for instruction. So just releasing the test questions, you can get some value out of that, but unless you get it for individual students, it's not, it's not as helpful.
Let me perhaps rephrase. So what I hear you saying, I think, I understand what, my insight here is, it's not that those test questions don't assist the teacher in his or her instruction, because they don't get the results, they don't assist an individual student or parent, because you don't know how the kid's scoring, but it does help the developers of the test.
Sure.
A private company, basically.
The field test, are you talking about?
Yes, the field test.
The field test, right.
Yeah, the field test, yes.
It helps the test developers.
I mean, down the road, they might assist students, because students will eventually take those tests.
Exactly.
So you want to find out if the questions are valid, or getting to the correct curricular points, but it sounds like much of the value goes to the private company that develops the test, as opposed to the student or the teacher or the district.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's exactly what field test does.
Yeah.
A question on the field test, are they administered by all the districts throughout the state, or is there a select, that they select certain districts to administer the field test?
All districts are administering them, but every year, it might vary as to what you're administering. This year, and actually, most years, most of our buildings get selected for a grade level or a couple of grade levels that they're required to administer the science for, or the grade 8 math. And for the ELA, oftentimes, it's broken up, or the math into a portion of that, because obviously, the state tests are in three days, so. But yeah, and there's a schedule they have for who's going to administer what.
See, so one of the things that's, you know, apparent is, when you give the regular test that is expected to be given, there are test questions that are embedded in that that are field test questions, and that enters into their psychometrics of how they end up assessing and developing their scale and rubric points. In a way, what we're saying is, start using them, don't add something else to increase more testing for the purpose of trying to build the better mousetrap. Use the device that you have, and if it's that important, you're using the entire state that has to take the test, instead of select students from one district versus the other, and use that generalization. The question is, is should we be spending so much time on testing? And testing for the ability to provide information that the district gets really no immediate benefit or gratification out, or data to help drive decisions, I just think is becoming too easy of a target in the time of reform, but not, not only too easy of a target, it's just becoming excessive.
With marginal benefit.
I definitely support eliminating the field testing, but the question I have is, last year, 6th graders on average, what, 12 to 15 hours of year-end testing, and that was before the field testing. Is that a mandatory amount of testing, where they're taking three sections, they'll take three different classes to finish a final? Is that a mandatory amount of time? Because it seems excessive as well.
Not the state test.
Not the state test.
So the other tests that they're taking, most of them are required because of the APPR, that we have to have an assessment to measure growth for our, for our teachers as part of the evaluation process. If you recall, la, la, not this past year, but the year before, we had pre and post tests, and we did eliminate those pretests using prior year test data, because everyone, I think, felt like that was just way too much, but we still do have to have an assessment with each teacher to assign a score to, for APPR.
Do you look at that yearly to see if it's the appropriate amount? So let's say, language administers three different days of a, of a test. Is that standard, or is that by the teacher?
The language exam, for example, the one thing that the assessments as part of APPR have to require, or have to be comprised of, is it has to measure all the different standards, or all of what's taught in a course. So in language, particularly before, we used to have the state proficiencies, and then the Regents exams are checkpoint B, and the state got rid of those exams, but they still put the requirement on the district to maintain that. So we've still maintain, it's about 110 minutes, I think, total, if, something like that, because there's a speaking portion, a listening, a writing.
Okay.
So, but we do look at that and make sure that the length is not, try and look at the length to not be that excessive. Thank you.
I'm all for getting rid of the field test. Any tests that you can get rid of? Because I think it's, well, it's just ridiculous of how much.
I think the more we can increase meaningful class time for our students, the better off they will be, and also to reduce the amount of stress the students and the parents and the staff are under to do all these tests. I wholeheartedly support this.
So what I'm hearing is, the board in consensus is, okay, moving forward, and I want to put the caveat out there, that we will comply with regulation and law or compulsion if need be, and I'll notify our attorneys to make sure that we're always on solid ground. Thank you. I think, I think this will be good news to our faculty and staff, as well as our administration, and most importantly, to our students and parents. So from my administration, thank you for your support.
Can I ask another question related now? With the results, okay, the field tests aside, that just were released, I mean, there were questions, but you also, the release of the data. How is that being used to help for instruction next year, or this coming year? I mean, there's not a lot of time before school opens.
Yeah, right now, I mean, we essentially have to pull the data together, we have to make sure we get the growth scores and get our evaluation process completed for our staff by September. So, but in regards to the actual scores, right now, the only thing we have is, they just released the performance levels, so we don't know what, like, student reports are going to look like, how they're going to be broken down. There is, there was some earlier data released, but I haven't gone back to look at the levels and how they correlate with that information, because that was somewhat hard to figure out what all of that meant. Obviously, we would look at trends, at grade levels and buildings, see if we can then go back to the information that's released to figure out if we can find data that's pertinent to instruction. Problem is, is it comes out at different times, so we don't always get some of the, I don't want to say item analysis, because it's not item analysis anymore, but there is some information that's been released in the past to look at groups of data, but last year, I don't believe that was released till later on, so you're trying to play catch-up as to how, how is this help in a classroom? You know, we give interim math assessments at the elementary level, every student in grade 3 take it, and it's directly tied to our instruction. We can go through that, administer it, do an item analysis, and every teacher can see which areas their students fell short in, go back and reteach it, review it. We don't have that same ability to do that with a state test, because we just don't get that type of information. So it's, it's hard to figure out how to use the state testing for any useful instruction right now, the way it's, it's given to us.
It could be powerful if we could get the correct data at the correct time.
And what's the barrier to getting the data? Just the state does not?
Money, probably.
From the state's perspective? The state doesn't have the money to give all the data to every school district?
It's secured, it's secured test data that Pearson puts together, so they don't, for example, we don't have, you know, if you look on State Ed's website, there's tons of Regents exams, there's practice exams, you can go back, student takes the Regents, you can really see where students fell short. With the 3 through 8 assessments, we don't have that. Everything is secure, you send everything back, and you get standards and levels reports back, but you don't have the ability to go to each of the items and each of the students and distinguish their shortfalls. So it's about security and most likely some money associated with that.
I also believe there's some contractual issues between the testing company and State Ed.
Absolutely.
And that contract will be up in a year, from what I understand.
Anyone else?
Okay, moving on to the Board of Education report. Since the last board meeting, I actually had signed what they call a tax anticipation note on behalf of the district. That is, so that, you know, the tax bills will be going out next month, but our fiscal year began July 1, so it's helped, helps us fund between now and when we start receiving the revenues, and this year, in cooperation with the town, we actually borrowed the money from the town at a .04 percent rate versus going out to the, what?
.4.
Point, all right, .4 percent rate, less than 1 percent.
I'd like your way better.
I feel like it's rated better, but.
But less than we would get on the open market, so, and, so, thank you to the, for the town for doing that cooperative agreement with us. We had it approved and whatnot by OSC, so it will save us money this year. Anyone else?
I'm busy, but you had brought up to me, Matt Satrie, what are we doing about GEA and whatever, and I was all set actually to write my commentary on GEA, except that Tim Kramer jumped the gun and took it away from me. But anyhow, there's a great article on GEA, and also, you know, some charts that I think really explain how it's hurting districts. And it's important, as, you know, the state says that it has, has a surplus, but it's really on the back of school districts that, you know, that they have taken the money back from, that is causing that surplus. And so, if you get a chance to read on board, the latest on board, there's quite a bit on the GEA and.
Are those available on the website?
Well, that's the one we just got.
Well, you can't, well, it's not on the website, you can actually subscribe, because we're a member district.
No, 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 I know, but.
The app.
For the public.
In case the community would like to see.
Well, there probably are some articles right on the front, there could be, on the, it's www.nisba, NYSSBA.org. Usually, there are some, the whole paper isn't there, but usually, there are some key articles on the front. But I just thought it was helpful, and the fact that you just asked me about it, Matt, I thought, gee, what good timing.
Yeah, and I think I had mentioned to you too, I believe, the day, I had asked you that day, I think there had been some of the legislators in ICIT had been down at the State Capitol, again lobbying for additional funding and on behalf of the GEA and whatnot.
Right, I think Billy Easton, who's with the Alliance for Quality Education, he organized that, you know, looking for more funding, so.
Yeah, because I think that's critical, that we keep that in the forefront of the community's mind, that, you know, that has not gone away, and it's critical for Bethlehem to keep advocating to our local legislators to restore that funding.
Whenever we get articles on that, is there a way, you know, so just community members really don't have to go through and figure out the websites, that we can scan them into the Bethlehem website, so they can just click on it, especially with, because that's what we've been talking about for the past couple of years, of getting the community involved with all this stuff with the GEA and all that. So if there's a way that we could, just so they could click.
Joellen's saying yes.
Yeah, I mean, the app, the app is on, you could download the app free, as, well, as being part of a school district that's.
Some of us don't have smartphones, Lynn, so I think.
But I'm just saying, I mean, that would be a digital form of it, as opposed to, you know, copying, printing, scanning it in.
It's a good idea, though.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Definitely.
I know a number of us went to the school law conference, which I think was between the last meeting and now, I know Mike and Diane and I were there, Tom and Jody and Sal, I'm not sure if I missed somebody. I was there briefly. You were there for part of it. I think we all brought back notebooks with resources on court cases and decisions and direction from the municipal law staff, so we'll have that, I guess, available for folks. But it was, is always a very good program and very informative.
I wasn't there.
You didn't go?
I didn't go.
Oh, because one of you, someone was there.
It was, take the credit anyhow. Candy jobs.
Oh, Kathy, I was, yeah. I was there briefly, and I felt bad I had to leave, but we had a commissioners' round table that we couldn't hold there, ended up having to do it over at Bowse's, and we met the new assistant commissioner, took Ken Sled's place, Cosmo Tangora, and plus, again, had school board members from all over the state speaking to the commissioner on the issues like testing that are most bothersome to individuals. It went well, people are very civil in that kind of environment.
We're from upstate.
Well, it could make a difference too. No, but, no, but the people around the table are from all over the state, so they were, they were from downstate too.
Any other board members? Okay, moving on, next we have presentations, and we'll have a report from Judith Keough on the tax rate that will be set tonight, we'll be voting on that.
That's exciting, and you're going to talk about that.
And it's going down from last year.
It's going down.
I know, this, I felt the earth shake as we were getting ready. Oh, I don't have to touch anything? Who's driving this?
You can, you can drive now.
Okay.
We had a little bit of uncertainty when we were looking at our tax rates in this coming year, because this is the year that the town of Bethlehem was completing a town-wide reevaluation of all parcels. So there was a little bit more flux in those final assessed values. We did know that because the overall assessed values were going up within the town of Bethlehem, that that would cause our tax rates to, in fact, be lower. So the question was, how low would they be? Part of our discussion tonight is to answer that question for you. As you can see, our rates last year were about $21.60 per thousand. When we went into our budget hearing and the budget vote, the information that we had presented to the community was that the rates would be around $20.83 per thousand. We now have the final rates, and it's even lower, we're down to $20.76 per thousand, and that is the same rate for both communities, which is a function of the fact that the equalization rates are both at 100 percent for both of those communities again this year. So because both assessment levels are at current market value, you get this unusual situation where the rates are, in fact, the same for both of the towns. So we're down 6 cents per thousand from our initial estimate, so if you were one of the many homes whose assessed values stayed flat, or only increased a slight amount, you will likely see a reduction in your tax bill when those are mailed out at the very beginning of September. So it is rare and nice to be able to propose final rates to you tonight that are lower than last year's, close to 4 percent lower than last year's amounts. This chart is really just to give you an idea, people often equate that whatever the levy increase that is part of the budget is, well, that must be what the tax rate increases are, and that is not the case, as you can see with these historical rates over the last few years, where we have had uneven equalization rates between the communities, or greater shifts in overall assessment values from one year to the next. There have been some variations in the rate changes that each of the community members would see between Bethlehem and New Scotland. Again, this year, because we're at the same equalization rate for two years in a row, you are seeing a decrease in the rate of 3.85 percent. The district still is going to collect 2.99 percent more in the levy, it's just that it's spread among more parcels or parcels with a higher value in the community. Also, part of the resolutions that you have before you tonight is to look at the various components within the fund balance. I have noted what we are recommending this evening for those June 30, 2014 numbers on the reserves and on the fund balance. These are unaudited totals, we're in the midst of the audit right now, but these should be fairly close to what you will ultimately see when that report is released. We were estimating that we were going to have a surplus somewhere in the vicinity of 200 to 500,000 in the general fund. The surplus looks like it is going to be about 560,000, and in fact, that's the increase that you see in the total fund balance from the $9,272 last year, up to $9,830 this year. A large portion of that increase, though, is restricted, because we had a, a. A large portion of that increase, though, is restricted because we had a non-recurring event in this fiscal year, and that was the closing on the sale of 90 Adams. So, because of that, you'll note the mandatory reserve, because we still had some debt outstanding on that building associated with some bonds that had been issued many years ago, we still are required to put that into this restricted mandatory reserve. So, you'll see that shrinking a little bit each year going forward as we pay down the principal and the interest on those underlying bonds. So, although we have the 560,000 surplus, if you subtract out that restricted component, you're really looking at about 195,000. So, sometimes the crystal ball projection works very well, and this is one of those moments in the general fund. You'll note that we're recommending an increase in the tax surcharge reserve, and that too is a reflection of the revow that had occurred. As of today, we have over, if all of the requested reductions in assessments that have been filed with the town were granted, applying the school tax rate to that, we'd be looking at over a million dollars in refunds that would need to be paid back to the community. Not all of the requested adjustments are granted, so what we do is we propose a reserve amount that should reasonably protect us, so that as those claims are settled in the future, we have a source of funding. So, the recommendation is to increase that from 170, where we were last year, up to $500,000. The other reserves are fairly consistent, we did bump up the retirement reserve, we still have a little bit more growth that we can take in that, that is to protect us in the event of fluctuations in the pension rates as established by the state. So, that becomes a very helpful tool to us, especially where we've seen some pretty hefty rates over the last few years, and indeed, some fluctuations in those rates.
Judy, quick question on the tax surcharge, how many challenges does that represent? Is it 500, 1,000?
It was around 200, Michelle, am I remembering? 120?
120 challenges?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've set up an Excel document, because they're still coming in.
And when do they have, when's the time limit to be able to file the appeal based on the assessment, final assessment?
It's soon, I think it's within the next week. Michelle, do you recall the specific date or not?
So, I agree with you first, but we're still getting that lawyer's...
That had already filed in appropriately, okay.
In the pipeline.
Clarify, Judy, as well, so did you say you anticipated a million dollars?
I hope not. If everything that has been requested is granted, it would be a million dollars. From an historical perspective, that doesn't usually happen, and some of these can take quite a way to work their way through the process as well. So, it's really, like any of our other reserves, we look at the underlying data so that we can come up with a reasonable estimate. We are, as you may recall, very much limited by statute in terms of how much money we can have in these reserves, because they don't want us to be able to accumulate more than we should. So, it's all based on what we think is a reasonable exposure to the district from the settlement of those claims.
What has the prior years shown?
Well, it's in fact been a little bit lower, because we've had a revaluation, that's what's prompted the spike in those claims. Last year, we dropped it down to 170, and that's the lowest it's been in many, many years, just because all of the older claims had in fact been through their due process.
But didn't we have a refund this year that came out of the refund?
Yes, and that, yes, so that affects the, there are increases and decreases from one year to the next in those values, so...
Should the claims come out higher than $500,000, where would you come from?
Our unrestricted, unreserved, unappropriated fund balance, again, that's part of the reason that that is there. One of my expressions is reality happens, and you never know what curveball is going to come your way. It's a $90 million business, and I can guarantee you that there will be curveballs, if that were one that came to us, we would look at coming back to the board, advising you of that, we'd be doing a budget modification, and then it would come out of that other surplus, the unrestricted. Nice segue, Charmaine, because you'll note that the undesignated, unreserved surplus is down to about 3.48%. We are required to be at no more than 4% of the subsequent years, the 14, 15 budgets appropriations, so we're well within the required range for that unrestricted portion of fund balance.
Judy, are any, going back to the tax surcharge, are any businesses included in that number?
Yes, there are a number of businesses. In fact, if you look at the dollar amounts of the claims, as you would expect, because of the businesses being much higher in their assessments typically, when they file a surcharge claim, it's a larger amount, so...
A large portion of them, I believe, are businesses too.
Of the dollar values, yes.
Because they also took the, they took the largest reassessment through the overall evaluation.
Yeah, I think it was around, close to 600,000 of that total, were from commercial requests that have been filed. So, we'll keep an eye on that, the town is very good about keeping us informed as those are settled and the notices come into our office, so we'll keep you posted as that happens throughout the year, and then we'll reevaluate these balances at the end of the year. So, crystal ball of where we think we'll land, and I'll be back to you in, at the October board meeting to give you the final numbers of where we wrap up for this year. But you'll note in the resolution, that's before you tonight, we have to put these estimated values for the statutory reserves, so this is where the numbers originated from. Also new this year is, as we talked about during the budget process, we are changing the way that tax payments are being collected. We in the past had collected the New Scotland parcels within the business office, the majority of the parcels from Bethlehem were all collected by the town of Bethlehem. So, in conversations with them, we were exploring other ways to build in some efficiencies and/or possibly create savings and get to a win-win position, and we had proposed, and the board had approved us moving in the direction of having BOSI's be the third-party administrator, if you will, to collect, to both generate the bills and to collect the taxes for all parcels. So, for most residents, it should be a very seamless process, the tax bill is still going to arrive in the mail with the instructions on how to pay your taxes. There will be a return envelope included within that, so the payments would go back to a post office box, which will be monitored by BOSI's, and then they will process those payments. There are some people, though, who do like to pay in person, they want to get that receipt, some people like to pay in cash as opposed to a check, and we wanted to provide an alternative for them, since they can no longer go to Town Hall and they cannot come into the district offices either. We had concerns about having a lot of foot traffic with our location here in the high school with security-related concerns as well. So, we have made an arrangement with Pioneer Bank, which I think will provide some more flexibility in hours, and I think will end up being a nice service for taxpayers who wish to pay in person. And the two locations are, one on 184 Delaware Avenue, or, which is just a few blocks further down from Town Hall, or in Glenmont, the Pioneer Savings Branch will accept payments there. Their hours are expanded beyond what you might normally see at Town Hall with the nine-to-five Monday to Wednesday, and they also offer evening hours on both Thursday and Friday. So, we're hoping that that will be much more convenient for people when they go to make their tax payments. We also have added, thanks to our communications office for helping us with that, we have a brand-new tax payment frequently asked questions resource that is now available on the district's website. So, in addition to the tax calculator that was there that we had announced during budget time, we also have a whole host of questions and resource information for people about where to go to make the payments. Also, when those bills go out, there's going to be a one-page summary sheet with instructions too, so for anybody who isn't reading about this in the spotlight or checking into the district's webpage, all of that information will be within their tax bills.
Judy, is, do they not have Saturday hours, or they won't collect on Saturday? Because there's no...
I do not believe they have Saturday hours. They have the extended hours Thursday and Friday.
Okay.
And I know Town Hall does not have Saturday hours, other than for a very limited time at the end of the collection season either, so that's not a change for people?
Mm-hmm.
So, that was it for the tax rate update, if there are no other questions, I can go right into the food service summary.
Okay.
All right, who's driving on this? Am I doing it again?
You are.
Okay. Okay. Did you hide it on me? We also wanted to give you an update, I know we've been spending a lot of time talking about food service over the last two years, it seems like now, as we've been struggling with trying to generate less red ink in the program in light of the various changes. We do have our new food service director with us this evening as well, Alisa Eizer, sitting in the, in the second row there. We'll give you a formal introduction when we get to that point on the agenda, but I wanted to give her a quick shout-out at the beginning. We had a loss last year of 105,000, and as you know, we were really struggling to try to bring it in lower than that, and we were trying many different, what we hope were creative ideas to bring that down. Business office was much more involved in the day-to-day operations, we were tracking sales on a daily basis, and we had set up a brand-new model to track the, both the revenues and the expenditure side of the food service program. And when we had met at the June board meeting, we were fairly optimistic, because we appeared to be coming in better than we had even hoped. We were projecting at that time that we'd come in around $63,000. Now comes June 30th, and we're going through the closeout process, we're looking at the actual inventory numbers, we have actual sales data to work with, and this is the point when we look at how did the crystal ball do relative to actual results. And what we did do was improve our net loss from last year's numbers, but it is lower, it's a greater loss than what I had projected in June. So, I'd like to just take a few moments tonight to walk you through what some of those differences were. On the revenue side, we had a pretty accurate model. We were over by about $5,000 on our operating revenues, and part of that came from an adjustment on the commodities number, which is the benefit of the food that we get from the federal government. What caused a $5,000 bump up on the revenue side, though, also contributed to a $5,000 increase in costs on the expenditure side, because those two are effectively a wash. Now, these revenue numbers do exclude the $60,000 transfer that had been authorized in June, I'll show you that in two slides ahead, but just so you can see raw operating totals, we did a little bit better than we projected, and about only $20,000 more than we had done in the prior year.
Before you leave this slide, could you just explain the surplus food as revenue? What, tell me a bit about that category.
Because the federal government is giving us meals at no cost, that represents a benefit that comes to the district, so under generally accepted accounting principles, we're required to show that as a revenue. Because we're spending the food, though, it has an offsetting expenditure amount as well. So, fairly close on the revenues. On the expenditure side, though, while we did about dead even with our actual expenditures for last year, which ordinarily would be a good thing, the disappointment for me came because it was about $30,000 more than what we had projected in June. And it's really, if you look at each of those line items, it's really across a combination of all of the lines. On our salaries, we had some absences that we were covering, we were in somewhat of a triage mode with the departure of the director and an interim, and we needed to bring in some additional staff just to keep things humming along, so that popped us up about $6,500 more than I had projected. When your salaries are higher, your fringe benefits are higher, because those are as a percentage of the salaries. We also had a shift in health insurance with some of the, one of our employees increased a level, which caused our costs to go up. We have tweaked that in next year's model, where I've talked with the office about actually looking at the numbers, not just at the beginning of the year, but to monitor that on a quarterly basis. So, we've really had some lessons learned in terms of this model and how to make it better going forward, because I like to be precise in all things that I do, and this variance really bothers me. On the equipment line, we had talked about replacing the point-of-sale units in this fiscal year, and while we have an encumbrance in place for that, we had ordered it, we just were not able to get the actual units installed before the end of June, so that actual expense line is lower, because it doesn't hit here until the equipment is in and installed. So, that is something that does help with those other overages on the other line items, and it will be a cost that will be absorbed in this coming year's budget. Food products is really where we had the largest variance from the projections. We were looking at the totals as they were coming in monthly, and they seemed to be okay. We knew that we were working really hard to draw down on the inventory that we had on hand, but we still were buying food, because much of what you're serving is perishable in nature, so whether it was your, your breads, your fruits, your vegetables, we were expecting a smaller tail in terms of items that had been ordered in the fiscal year, but that we're not going to pay for until the end of the year. All our projections were showing that that was declining, and in fact, when we looked at the actual numbers, truing it up at the end of the year, it was not as small as the model had indicated. So, that is why we have the larger increase there on the food products estimate. Again, lower than last year, but not enough to get us to where I had projected that we would be. So, if you look to the total results there, if you're looking at just the revenues and the expenditures, we had predicted the $63,000 loss, and in fact, it's closer to $87,000. Now, we did transfer the $60,000 that had been approved in June, but because this loss is larger than we expected, we will have a deficit within that fund unless the board is willing to approve another $20,000 in a transfer into the food service fund from the general fund. The $20,000 is very easily tolerated by the general fund, that's a much larger balance, and we're still within the range of where we expected that we would be, but it would be necessary to put us into the black in the food service fund as of the end of the year.
Can I ask you a question, Judy?
Yes.
What was the original budget for the food products? We showed a decrease from 13 to 14 at 407, 285, but what was the original budgeted item?
The budget for the food service fund is a little bit different than the general fund, because it's nothing that is actually formally voted on by the board, it's not voted on by the public, it's a number that we put in place based on what we think it's going to be. So, it was, again, with the flux that we were in in the part of the year, a bit of a moving target, we would need to adjust that as we were going through the year. I'd have to look up what the exact figure was on that, I mean, our food product was around 437. I believe we had budgeted, looking at the actual of 458, we probably would have budgeted a little bit higher, around 475, but I can look that up and let you know. At the end of the day, even though it was below budget, you're still looking at your net income, the revenues with the expenditures, so...
I guess my question is, you know, as of June 30th, you, when we saw the data, you had a high level of confidence in it, just because it was June 30th, and the anticipation was you were looking at some projections that were based on real-time information. I'm just wondering, kind of going forward to make sure that we don't do this next year, you know, what, what could have been, what didn't we do that we could have done to make sure we hit, you know, the projected number a little bit closer?
It was a bit of a learning curve for us this year in terms of following all of the expenditures. Food service is a difficult business, because you're dealing with very variable purchasing needs, it's all driven based on consumption, you throw in a few break weeks there, so I look forward to working closely with our new food service director and monitoring all of those invoices, and we will tweak that model, as you know, this past year, we were looking at everything daily for the sales totals and then evaluating on a monthly basis. So, you know, part of the projections, we're looking at estimates that had come from the middle of the year. What we were seeing when we looked at the monthly totals affirmed that that seemed to be a good number. I do tend to be an optimist by nature, so when I saw the monthly numbers that seemed to be coming in, I was, as you noted, more optimistic that we would be doing better with it. So, it's a crystal ball, it's not an... not an exact science.
Can I ask another, just a follow-up question? Do we, I mean, you talk about the volume of perishable food items that we purchase. Do we, how much do we waste? Do we waste a lot of, I mean, you know, like you said, this is, you know, based off of assumptions of what your, what your audience is going to purchase. So, you know, do you track how much waste there is, and what is that number?
We are not tracking waste. Obviously, it's something that we, as a matter of policy and practice, try to minimize. I know that's something that food service directors take to heart.
Right.
We, I'll talk with Alisa about that and see if there is a way to actually track that. I mean, it really should be very minimal. I've talked with other food service experts. There's a consultant who I've started to speak with as well. So he indicated it should be a very slow or a very small number.
Right. I mean, we all hope our waste in our own kitchens is a small number, but, you know, sometimes you're even wrong in your own assumption. So I would imagine a school district, you know, this could be a big number, and I just wonder if we even know what that number is.
Yeah. I do not know what that number is. I would have to look at that and evaluate it going forward. I've become much more familiar with food service operations, so.
Judy.
Go ahead.
Four questions at once.
And you had mentioned the point-of-sale equipment, and also I know in a previous audit, we, one of the findings was inventory control.
Yeah.
And we discussed the need to address that and have a better monitor control. So I don't know if the point-of-sale would have a component which would say what's taken out of inventory because of spoilage or whatnot. So I, will that address that possibly?
And I would think that would be, we are looking at those records. That was a day-one conversation. It might even have been a before-day-one conversation that Alisa and I had, just stressing the importance of monitoring that. And when you're in the food service business, that's what it's all about, is minimizing waste, making sure you have enough on hand. You don't want to be running out of meals. You're running out of meals, you're cutting your sales short, and you're pushing customers away because they know they can't count on getting the meals.
And again, I would emphasize the need for a tight inventory control that we've talked about.
Absolutely.
Is there anything we can do about, you know, with the federal food program? Children have to take, and I'm talking more of the elementary and middle school, have to take certain items. And let's say the piece of fruit is an orange, and they just don't want it, but they have to take it, and then they end up throwing it in the garbage. Is there any way to control that? Because that seems utterly wasteful.
Yes, there is a way to control that, but I would defer to our new food service director. I don't know if you want to stand and go to the mic and just, it's working now.
No, she pointed to it. That's what's...
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Is it, okay, good. So with offer versus serve at the elementary school level, what I've seen done and done to some extent is have what's called a sharing table. And a sharing table has to be monitored, of course, but when kids have, they have to take, they have to be offered something, they have to be served something, and then at that point it's the kid's decision as to what they do with what's on their tray. If they can put, say, anything that they don't want on what the sharing table or in a sharing box for another student who may want to eat the orange to pick up, that can be a way to eliminate waste. But that's just one example of how you can do that. You have to get creative with the regulations, as in education we all know, so.
Let's say there's 30 pieces of fruit on that sharing table. Lunch is over.
Yeah. So then again, that fruit, say you've got a bunch of oranges and apples that all these kids didn't want to eat, that would be waste. Or what I did in the prior school district is we had an agreement with the local food bank, and we actually donated that, and they, the food bank would come pick that up and go that route. You, you know, you're forced to offer and serve something to the student, so you can't really eliminate the waste, but you can eliminate it going in the garbage versus in someone else's mouth. And that's a good PR thing for the school district.
I think what I was trying to get at, once it's served, we can't recoup it.
No, you can't recoup it.
Yeah. So that's where a large portion of our waste comes.
No, I wasn't talking about that waste.
But a large portion does come because of the federal program, especially when you're à la carte. You usually will not have as much waste just because of the fact you're buying what you're eating versus I have to give you this with the program.
No, I understand there's waste there. I guess my question was more, how much waste is there because we didn't fully, you know, estimate correctly with respect to, or are we overcooked or whatever? So that, there's got to be waste. I just don't know what.
Before it's sold.
Before it's sold, or, you know, it's at the end of the day, or the end of the week, or the end of the month, or whatever.
Hamburgers, sloppy doughs.
Bread.
There are ways to, you know, if you have leftover chicken, I know the kitchen in the past would make it into, you know, chopped-up chicken and put it on potatoes or something like that.
Sure, we all do that.
The same types of things that you might do at home.
Yeah. And there are good checks and balances, production records, which, you know, have room for improvement here, are a great tool in order to make sure you're preparing enough but not too much, and that can be a great cost.
Yeah.
Control. So there's tools.
Good.
I'll let Judy.
Thanks.
Mike, a question along the lines of what we had had. Are we pretty confident going into the new school year, we'll know what inventory we have on hand and what we're using on a regular basis?
Yes.
I'm not touching anything here, so I don't...
Anyone else? Any other questions for Judy?
I would just say, welcome.
Welcome and good luck.
Welcome.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you, Judy. Next up is our facilities improvement project update.
Hi, I'm Scott Bowers. I'm with Campus Construction Management Group. Alongside me is Dan Hughcraft with Ashy McGrath Architects, and Ed McGrath from Ashy, one of the owners of Ashy McGrath Architects is in the crowd. We're all part of the project, your capital project here. And we'll give you a quick presentation to where we're at right now. The emergency pool project. Right now, you can see on the left side the old columns and how we replaced them with the new ones on the right. On the left side, you can see how dark the pool area was and how we brightened it up by painting it. On the right side of the...
Did we paint the pool, too, it looks like?
You painted the ceiling, only the ceiling.
Oh, it looked like...
This is what you go through to do abatement for your floor tile. You actually have to do two complete layers of poly, and they can't be done at once. They have to be done separately all the way through every area that got abated, so no fibers ever get out, even though it's trapped in vinyl. It's just a precautionary matter. You can see as they're putting it up. This is after we've abated a floor, we lay down a layer of Ardex on top of a moisture barrier under all the floors that have been abated before the new tile goes down.
What is the composition of Ardex?
It's a cementous-based product with a latex additive and anything else that you know of. And you put it down, it's mixed almost, it's almost like water. It goes on and it dries, and it doesn't shrink very much.
It's also like a leveling compound?
Yes. They have a screed that goes through and has a little prong on it quarter-inch down on each side, and they screed the whole floor with it. And they just keep moving it around until it takes its place and levels itself. And then they go through and buff on top of it with a buffer. This is one of your hallways that's been redone. It's been abated, moisture barrier Ardex, and the new tile floor in it. And it's new migrations floor tile we're using throughout your school project, which is supposed to be five times harder than regular VCT tile and two and a half times less resistant to breakage, so it should be more durable for you. And it's also...
It's made up, the standard is vinyl composition tile, but this tile is a bio-based tile. It has a polymer that's made from plant material that's grown in the United States, and like Scott said, it has much higher performance, and also it's much more environmentally responsible as we put this down.
You can see the old, lower on the picture, and the new floor tile that's in place, how much brighter it is. Everything in orange at the Hammergrill School has been abated, Ardext. New migratious floor tile is complete right now. All we have is punch list items, Cove base that they're, we're making them repair and fix to make it right. But that's how much we've got done at Hammergrill. It's almost complete. By the end of this week, it should be 100% complete. The floor's all down.
We are doing a massive amount of work here at the high school, a lot of site work, as you know, that will continue through this summer and some of that into the fall. Some of the things that are ongoing right now, we've completely demolished and removed all the old bleachers in Jim Bee, so they're waiting new bleachers to be installed soon. We also, at the tennis courts, have taken down all the fencing and posts and demolished the old layers that were there, and currently the new paving and shimming is done now. So soon, the new coating will go on that, and the fencing and all that will go up as well. We have a huge amount of work going on at the high school, in the stadium, and around the fields. And I just want to mention, as project architect, for you, one of my highest priorities is to understand and meet your expectations. So when expectations are misunderstood, I take it personally. I feel terrible when it happens, and I want to step up to make sure we mitigate any impact that misunderstanding or expectations result in. And we did have a misunderstanding with the high school track that resulted in some additional costs being needed to do that work. And so one of the ways, I'll just briefly go through some of the steps we took to help mitigate that. And first and foremost, we go back to the contractor that provides these costs. And so we negotiated with them approximately $7,000 less from their initial cost they gave us. Second, we still go back to that contractor and others, looking at the work they're doing right now, how we can improve that and get some savings from it without diminishing any of the quality or the performance that we expect. And so we did that, and we're looking at about $17,000 to $20,000 there as well. The third step we do is look at any potential future savings that are out there. We've identified close to $23,000 that we can put back towards the district. And then fourth, I worked with Scott, and we worked very hard to look at, can we authorize the use of allowance money? And we did have some in this contract to help ease that cost as well. So when we put all that together, there's a big chunk taken out of that initial cost, and that's where we want it to be. And we also, because of that, were able to look at using an alternate that we bid on to do sod at the high school as well. We take the $80,000 to $85,000 that we had over budget when we bid the project, we put those all together. We actually end up using about $7,000 from our $1.1 million contingency. And that's really, you know, we felt very strong about trying to do that. But that's really the process that Scott and I worked on with all of the change orders that go through. We look at getting the best value and the fairest price for the district. And so you'll see that with some of the change orders also that you have on the docket tonight.
Can I ask you a question about the bleachers?
Yes.
You said that they'll be, someone said they'll be installed shortly, and that, you know, do you have a sense of the timeframe of that, when the new bleachers would be in in the main gym?
We're looking in October right now.
Okay, thank you.
But we always knew that upfront, okay? It shouldn't hurt anything because the basketball season doesn't start, and we're, right now, we've been assured they'll be here before the basketball season starts.
Thank you.
Part of your project, that's new copper piping going throughout the high school for the mains, all your domestic water? There's, it's installed right now and above the ceilings?
Is it pretty much protected because copper is a major commodity of what people steal nowadays?
If they steal this, they're going to get very wet. It's a lot of pressure, and it's a lot of volume of water.
And we want to sign them up for a weightlifting team. That stuff is heavy.
And right now, we're, the blue is, that's all the hallways in your school, at the high school here, and the water main has completely been replaced. It's insulated, it's been tested, it's been high-count chlorinated, which means they super-induced chlorine to it. They take a count out of it and check it to make sure they have enough chlorine for the water you have in it. And we're also waiting for the tests this week to come back for the water test final. Everything has been going really well.
So all the water fountains will be operable?
Yes, for school.
That, I'm glad you mentioned that, Ms. Lenhart, because that's one of the things I've asked Greg to personally see, too, is that because we've had issues over many years, people don't necessarily have the faith in going to a water fountain. What would be better than to have it clean, operational, ready to go, so that we have a fresh start, so to speak, with a fresh water source?
Are they the type that allow for like a water bottle to be filled up with?
Pardon?
Are they the type of water fountains that allow a water bottle to be filled easily from?
I think we only have one or two that are designed for the water bottles. You can tilt your water bottle and, you know, we'll go through and do a big assessment. We have something that's 50 years old, it's a miracle or something.
Which you'll find your water, from looking at the cold waters, coming out very, very clear right now.
Is everything on schedule so far?
For the foremost, yes. We've changed, we've moved things around. We originally planned on doing the high school abatement this year, part of it, and we switched it all to elementaries to pound the elementaries out first on the floors.
But like the fields and all the stuff going on outside, athletic fields?
The field's going very well right now. They've been doing a fine job.
Right. And that's on schedule and nothing to worry about as far as the timeframe?
Not at this time.
The only thing, if I may add, Scott, is the only thing that, you know, causes some concern to me that I know they're trying to all address is that because of the sod versus seed issue, the change order, after tonight, they can move forward with that. Because of the decision, sometimes it does take some time, as we were looking at the track issue and this, that there, we've got to try to get back on pace with what we originally thought, because we would have hoped to get this growing season as best possible. I just don't know where we're at with that. But I know they'll probably be shifting back to that, I think, later this week.
He will be.
To the fieldwork.
Hey, since you brought up the sod issue, do the, the cost, I used to work in garden centers, my brother laid sod for years. The cost, the additional cost of the cost above seeding for sod, does that take into account the water that would be needed to keep that sod moist enough until it roots?
You would still, we still would have needed the water if we had seeded just as much. You'd have had to water every day. The good thing about the sod is you get the field earlier because it's established earlier. We still need the water, but it'll hold the water and better than what just the grass seed would have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
This is the Elsmere Playground Elementary. We've got all the under drainage in. There'll be more pictures that the next time we do a presentation, because they've actually got a couple of the pieces already installed this week. They started this week on it. It's all on site. They'll have it done. They should have it completely done by next Friday night. That's the plan for Elsmere, and they're going right from there to Hammergrill and then Glenmaugh.
If I can ask this question, because I know the question's going to come to me. And Marcy, if you can please not put it in the paper, when will you release it back to the district so that we can open it?
Soon as we, when it gets complete, they put all the wood chips in and everything's done. We just need the playground people, Woodson, Arf Woodson, to come here and inspect it thoroughly, so we have a letter of inspection from them.
Okay.
And as soon as the factory inspects it, it'll be yours.
And the reason why I ask that is the playgrounds are high-profile, that we may want to have the board, as well as the PTAs, the assisted... we may want to have the board, as well as the PTAs, the assisted there to do official openings so that we can get that out, and of course, we'd invite everybody then.
Well, not only that, to secure them until it has been inspected, because my sense is as soon as that's, that equipment goes up, kids are just going to mob it. So, I mean, we're going to have to figure out a way to make sure people know it's still off limits and to the public.
What's kind of neat is the bottom picture is the fake rock, I mean, for them to climb, it's pretty neat.
Yeah, I didn't know what that was. That it was like wrapped.
Yeah, that's right, there's like three big fake rocks that get put together. It's really a beautiful playground, I got, it's top notch.
We apologize for the community when the truck passed down Delaware Ave at five miles an hour, too.
Yes.
So, the entire length.
Will all the playgrounds be done by the start of school opening?
Two of them will be for sure, and the third one, they're going to work the weekend on, too, to try to, I can't guarantee the third one, which will be Glenmont. Our plan always has been to get them, but it hasn't even been delivered yet. Hammergrill just comes in this Friday, and the last one to come in is Glenmont. This is Elsmere Elementary School, shows the abatement, had to take place there also, and the ardex on the floor, how smooth it looks. And there's new tile floor going down in the cafeteria and the classroom, which are both done now at this time, all waxed and sealed.
Maybe this is a question more for Greg, but is, we talked about Hammergrill and Elsmere, the abatement, is that the end of the abatement that needs to occur at those elementaries, or is it potentially a future abatement?
Elsmere, because of the bathroom construction, we have to hold on those two wings, that'll happen next summer time.
Okay, but it'll be part of this project, so when this project is done?
There still is abatement, or there still is asbestos in most schools, but not much left, there's going to be floor time.
But we won't be doing any other abatement, like say, Hammergrill, next-
Correct.
-next summer, we've completed it. How about Elsmere? And Slingerlands?
Yeah.
So Elsmere will have some.
So it'll be Elsmere and the high school for abatement.
I'm not sure. Any at the middle school?
Right, and Glenmont will be done.
And Glenmont is done as well.
As you can see, the Elsmere Elementary, the pink is abated and ardexed, the green is abated and wood subflooring installed. We ran into some mysterious wood underneath where nobody expected, nobody knew it was there. And it was, the funny part was, it was on opposite side of the room where they took a core sample ahead of time to just check it, and it wasn't where the wood was, but you had two and a half rooms that actually had wood subflooring under that we had to replace. And they'll be tiling that this week, the orange part. Orange is completed with abatement, ardex, oh no, the orange is completed with abatement, ardexed, and new tile. It's upstairs, the three green rooms, that the wood has been installed, they ardexed it today, and they'll be tiling it on Friday. It's more abatement and more tiling going down at Slingerlands. We've completed the standing seam roof. If you look, they're actually adhering styrofoam or insulation, roof insulation in between all the slats of the metal roofing, and they'll go right over the whole thing with rubber, which is now done at this time. The roofers have been flying on this project, once they got started, got the material here.
How have we been on checks with the roofers flying?
Very good.
You know what I mean?
Yes.
Flying, construction management?
They're doing an excellent, excellent job. And I'll have somebody here, they're going to be working this Saturday again, and I've got one of my guys that'll be here to check on them.
Got a function of our generally good weather.
Yes, but they have been doing a tremendous job. At Slingerlands, the pink is abated and ardexed complete, and they've started floor tile installation. The middle school bathroom abatement, or not abatement, actually, we did have some abatement there, too, but it's, they're all gutted right now, the underfloor plumbing has just been installed, tested, they'll put the concrete back, and we're going to have that closed up for school until we, just two of the bathrooms, the ones next to the cafeteria, and then we'll work on those on the second shift, once school's in session.
So they'll be closed at the start of school?
Yes.
About how long do you anticipate before they come back online?
Uh, it's a, a month, it's just two bathrooms, about a month and a half, because we still need the toilet petitions to show up. All the porcelain for your urinals, the fixtures, all have to come in, that's what we're waiting for. But we always knew that upfront, but we figured, we counted all the bathrooms, we could spare two bathrooms at a time, that's why we're going to go through the whole school that way.
I would imagine, Tommy, you might have to work with the middle school staff, since one of those bathrooms is right near the cafeteria, and kids oftentimes will use their lunchtime to be more comfortable, and so, in terms of either time or whatever, I'm sure the middle school staff will deal with it, yeah. Thank you.
There's the seaming roof. The middle school has all the seamed roof areas complete at this time. They've had quite a crew on here of like 30 people sometimes, the roofing contractor.
Scott, in regards to the middle school, front entrance, when will our black draping potentially be addressed and gone?
It's going to start this fall.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question? If you're doing it in the fall and students are in the school, when will that take place, since that's the main entrance of the building?
It'll be second shift on the main entrance.
Okay, great, thank you.
And if for any reason we find that we have to, we'll make arrangements, it'll be either, can I leave it over with scaffolding and plywood and all that stuff to make it safe, or it'll happen second shift.
Okay, thank you.
And it's up to the contractor, he has the choice to do it either way, but he has to secure it, make sure it's safe, and we check on him. The middle school, we abated the two bathrooms, and in pink, the roof reseaming is complete. We still have some new roofing to go on there, but at least the reseaming is 100% done. Last but not least, Glenmont. That's the floor before the ardex goes down, you can see all the ripples and stuff in it from the bead blasting machine that took all the asbestos off. Actually, pumice beats the concrete with little beads, lead beads that go back and forth, and they pick up all the asphalt that has the impregnation of the asbestos in it. And that's what it looks like before we put the ardex down, that's the moisture barrier that we put down on every floor before it's ardexed, to make sure that if, let's say your fourth floor had a high moisture cap, we wouldn't be able to put the tile down. But by doing the ardex first, which levels it, and putting the moisture barriers down, there is no moisture problem. The area in orange has been abated completely?
They begin tiling next week.
Starting this tomorrow, we're going to start tiling tomorrow over there. And we've made it very clear at our meeting today, they have until next Friday to have all the tiling installed in all the classrooms, 100% sealed, waxed, turned over to the school by next Friday is what the plan is, in all the classrooms.
So they'll have roughly two weeks, once they're delivered back. Is it one of me?
Yeah.
I keep losing two or three weeks left.
Actually, it's only about three days because teachers have to get in, at the very latest, 20, 29th.
So it's by next Friday, right? You're saying, okay.
Yes, next Friday.
I'm thinking this Friday's next Friday.
I'd like it to be this Friday, but it's not going to happen.
Does this process eliminate a lot of the mold? I mean, mold has been a problem over the years in some of the schools, and with this flooring?
Well, it's all gone now. All your subflooring has been completely taken the top about eighth of an inch to quarter inch right off it. All the, all your old tile that was there that had any grooves or lines or started separating and opened up, that's all gone. So this should, if you do have mold in your floor area, this should alleviate that. But it doesn't have anything to do with the walls, there's mold in your walls, and I don't know about it. I haven't seen any.
Yeah, that moisture control is almost a belt suspenders type procedure, but it prevents any moisture from coming up that pop your tile. So, you may have seen pop the floor tile, this prevents that.
I auditioned several years ago.
Yes.
So for all the outside stuff, so the roofing, the playgrounds, the fields, all that, so how much wiggle room do you have in the planning, so that, what if we had a week's worth of rain, or two weeks of rain, would that just completely throw this, I mean, two weeks would throw it by?
It would throw the site work off, yes, tremendously. We can't afford to lose two weeks, no.
So the weather up till this point has been pretty-
Been very decent.
Yeah, decent.
And the roofing, he plans on working second shift, third shift if he has to, around the clock, whatever he has to do to keep his schedule. He's been very, very good to work with, beating roofing.
Right.
He's, like I said, he's worked last Saturday, he's working this Saturday, worked at two schools last Saturday, he'll be working at the high school roof here, and over at Slingerlands on Saturday.
Right, so as long as we continue to have moderately okay weather?
Yeah, if it rains one day a week, it's not going to, it shouldn't hurt us too badly. The site's the only thing, really, once it gets too wet, then they have to wait for it to dry out before they can get on it again.
Right, right.
It was like today, today was a rainout day, but even the general contractor said, if we knew it was going to be like this, they would have worked.
Right.
Because it wasn't as-
Right, it wasn't as bad as this, yeah.
But the site guys kept working, digging the pipe, putting in all the storm drainage in, so they didn't stop today.
Did you say when the high school will be completed? Because I know they have a lot of the area blocked off over here. Will be done before the start of school here?
There won't be any more blocked areas off before the start of school. The water piping is all installed, now it's a matter of, they've got to finish putting roof decking, we're structurally increasing the strength of your roof in areas where you might get a snow load, where now it's, after it's been looked at, you have to increase the snow load strength, and they're going to work on that continuously. They might not get that all done before school starts, but if they have to, they'll work second shift on that. Same with the roofer, he can't put the roofing down to the new metal decking to put in place.
So do we anticipate that the front door will still be blocked at the start of school then?
Oh, yeah, that will be open, the front door?
Oh no, the front access, that'll be all opened up, that P E work that we're doing there. The fieldwork, all the fields that we were anticipating to be out of play for the start of this fall season, nothing has changed there. If anything, the contractors released some other fields for us, which is going to help us a little bit with some of our practices and our P E program, because pretty much starting tomorrow, they're back over on the stadium field working on that, and we've adjusted the way we're laying out our fields. So if they do get a stretch of weather, they're going to come over and continue on with this drainage piping, you know, around the fields, around the perimeter, so, you know, they can continue working. But everything's kind of what we expected. Really hurts us, the rain really hurts us, of course, with tennis courts. You know, we're in a paying mode right now, tomorrow, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, to get those courts ready for sports starting Monday. Okay, so we're crossing our fingers tremendously, that is a critical path right now.
But for the public, because I've heard some rumblings that, oh, things are behind schedule and so forth, it sounds like things are not behind schedule, and everything's moving along as it should, and-
A lot of it, matter of fact, are schedules posted online, so that they can see the work, potential work schedules for each project that they have, that campus does, and if they have to adjust it, they'll adjust it. But for the most part, I think if anything, the only area that I've seen of any type of drawback is because the stadium field, and we had to work through that-
Correct.
-and we have. Now, it starts, and actually, we couldn't work until we had a decision on sod versus seed, because there's actually two different elevations that the field would have to be set up. There's a different incline if you plant grass-
Right.
...versus a different elevation if you do the sod, and without that critical decision, you really do have to wait, so. But now, while they were waiting, they were actually getting ahead on something else.
Does that online schedule show when items are completed?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I have, no, I've got percentage, I've got a percentage schedule that I update every three, four days. I can give you that one if you want, anytime you want.
Yeah, we'll update, the schedule that's on it right now doesn't have our line of where we expect to be in the percentages.
The percentages aren't in that one.
Yeah, that changes weekly, so we can update that and then put that on-
Yeah, even if it comes from you, Greg, to Joe Ellen or Sabra, that we're at this point, even though this is our whole schedule, we're at this point, and we roughly anticipate we're 25% complete. Even just a brief statement saying, we feel that we're pretty close to our time schedule and our resources and the processes that we put into place to keep the project on scope, on time, and on budget. Something like that, maybe every once a month or something, to Joe Ellen, that that can be updated. In general, your overall sense, how's things going?
Of course, I would like to be a lot farther ahead because we have two weeks left, and everybody wants to get in their rooms, and I'm not panicking yet. I'm panicking a little bit, but, you know, we have meetings, we have two meetings every week, every day, we're talking, we're talking, we're dealing with principals, we're dealing with teachers, you know, letting them know that, okay, today you can get into your room, you know, tomorrow you can't. The communication's there, everybody's still nerfed up about the start, so, because there still is a lot to do. So I'll be happier September 4th.
But it is always planned, it was planned that way, we knew we were going to be right to the limit.
I think one of the things that is also needed to put it into perspective, if we did not have the two solid month delay that we had from state ed, we would pretty much have had all materials on site and prepped, ready to go for June 30th. So if you look at that, state ed's understaffing in their building department, which unfortunately is the situation that it is, that causes that delay, we've probably made up a month of that two-month delay. Would that be a fair statement?
Yes.
I think it's also worth mentioning that, you know, we understand that teachers would like two, three weeks to set up their classrooms, especially at the elementary school, it's just the magnitude of work that we're doing this year in the classrooms, it just, it just cannot happen. So, I mean, it's unfortunate, we're releasing as best as we can, but it's not ideal, but...
It's come a long ways in a month and a half, it really has.
Anyone else, any other questions for you? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I can just add one comment at the end. Throughout all of this, I want to thank Ashley, as well as campus, Ed, and I know Tom Sexton, as well as Greg, for working on the little bump that we had, but I think it's been resolved very helpfully and mitigated to a point that we virtually are still on budget, using roughly $7,000 to make sure we have replaced track, sodded field, as well as a couple other items, I think, on the tennis courts, that out of our $1.1 million contingency, which is what we have to utilize or not utilize, and then work for the best interests of the district, we are only into that at this point, $7,000, and we still have about $250,000 of allowances built into other contracts that we have availability. And if you look at it, this is a two-summer project and during the year, I can't say 50%, but one of our summers is almost complete, and we're pretty close to being on track. That gives me a better comfort, and I think Greg has been the person who helps alleviate some of my stress, even though he gets to carry it and gets more gray hairs. He has, he's been seeing that there hasn't been a lot of change orders that we see. We do know we have some in the works right now, one major one, which is, and when I say major, it's about $28,000, but I know the team is working on trying to get a better cost structure on that, but that's strictly due to undiscoverables, asbestos, and that's primarily at Glenmont. But other than that, they've been keeping track of any contractors' requests, and I think Greg is trying to stick to his previous statement of, we're trying to say that we planned this, and we don't see many potential issues down the road, and we're hoping that that still holds true. So thank you for everything that you've done to try to make your commitment to Bethlehem, and we appreciate the work.
Thank you.
And the one other thing, Tom, I think we had just briefly mentioned, I know a lot of people have asked me, where is the football team playing, so if you want to address that?
One of the things is, because the stadium field is down, I asked the athletic director to look into the fact that we have certain special events, whether it's senior nights or homecoming, that one is, we need a place where we can actively compete in our interscholastic athletic competitions in football. We have rented for two of the contests, Union College has entered into an agreement for us to rent their field, and what's- us to rent their field, and what's particularly nice about their agreement is, one is the cost is not that bad, I think, I believe it's around $700 for the event, which is about a, I think, a three-hour window. But they also allowed us to keep the gate, which is not necessarily always the tradition, and they've allowed our boosters to run their own concession on their property, which is not usually allowed. So, virtually, it's almost like our home field, and we can recoup some of the costs that we have to put out. The homecoming event, however, we wanted it to be a little closer to home. We have contracted the University of Albany, they have a little bigger and newer facility. I think that's costing us a little bit more, but they're working out the details to try to assist all the parties. Because I, you know, this project is not about football. This is about our district competition stadiums, and we have two. One is the field on Van Dyke, and one is the fenced-in field in the middle of our property. We have tried to reach out to each of the booster organizations, as well as the coaches, to make sure that they always have one night that's usually on the old, what was called the old football field, that we're trying to make sure that every team has the opportunity for a special evening, even throughout this project. And we, we have some productive ways, although some teams have said, no, we really want to just play it back on school, even if it's senior night, but we want the community to know that we are making those strides, because it's really an interest of fairness to everyone, although those that would play on the, the normal stadium on Van Dyke would not have a place to play otherwise. So, we want to try to temper it with fairness and equitability as much as possible. So, we have some great options, and I want to thank Len for arranging that, as well as Union and University of Albany for trying to assist us at the most efficient cost as possible for everybody.
I have a question. Is there a possibility, I don't know if there's money in the budget, or some way that we could send maybe a fan bus for some of the high school students that want to go to the games, but transportation may be an issue to Union or-
I will, I will tell you, I'm not, I'm not sure about the money side of it, but because we are going away for certain events, that, you know, the interest of safety and on Friday nights, we may want to consider that. I think Len is either in tomorrow or Friday, I'm not sure, but I'll, I'll try to touch base, and then I'll ask him and Scott Landry to look at that. I would suggest that if it is, it's for high school only, as supervision must be a must, and it would be for students, not necessarily appearance of the community. But we'll explore that.
Got it.
Any other questions? No, great, thanks. One thing we failed to do when Judy gave the presentation on the food services, to take action on whether we approve that $20,000 transfer. So, I, I'd like to propose the following motion, is recommended that the Board of Education approve a transfer of an additional $20,000 from the general fund to the food service fund effective for the year ending June 30th, 2014. So, that's a first.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, now recognition of visitors. At this time, this time is set aside for visitors to address the Board of Education on any agenda item. Does anyone like to address the board? Any comments? If you would, please come up to the microphone and state your name, please.
Good evening. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself. I'm on the agenda for an appointment for the English leave replacement, and I'm Alicia Sharp, and I'm really excited to be here at Bethlehem, and I want to thank you for your time and having me here in the district. I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Oh, yes.
I just wanted to say hi. My name's Mark Ronich, and I have a program on Bethlehem Cable that I co-host called The Jewish View, and I'm, just hope that you'll tune in and watch. I'm trying to book Dr. Douglas and Matt on the program, so, anyway, we'll keep you posted as to upcoming shows, okay? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Talk to you after the meeting. Okay. All right. Seems like we want to be ahead of... Am I missing some pages? I must be, I'm missing pages. Did I go to break? Okay. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through N.
So...
That's a first, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That carries. Professional personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items A through D. D?
Some, second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
I have, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
I noticed that item K, I'm a little...
Yep.
Is K, is an appointment of a teacher for the Chinese language program. Could you just give us a bit more information on where that teacher will be working?
She'll be teaching the two high school classes. We had talked about looking at online options, we're still trying to find a part-time teacher, and we were able to find a part-time teacher to teach those classes at the high school.
Good, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That carries. Now, going on to support personnel, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support stack, staff action items A through N.
Some, second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, we, we do have one that we need to make a recommendation and amendment for. I'm just, what letter is it?
F.
F. If everyone could turn to letter F. Okay. And, oh, I'm on professional service, no wonder why I couldn't find it.
That's page nine.
In regards to F, where it says salary, step three of salary, grade five, Judy, your recommendation, due to some information that we gained some clarity on from legal counsel today, would recommend that that be changed to step five of salary, grade five, and what would that be annually?
That amount would be $32,296.
And that would, the reason for this is, this allows the district to settle an issue that's been longstanding for over five or six years, to the fairness of all parties and where they were being paid, and although they will probably take a slight decrease in pay, it was not as substantial as first, first thought, and the request that came through was from the collective bargaining unit on behalf of this, to be fair to the employee.
Okay. Do I have a motion with the stated amendment?
Some, second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That carries.
And you also, you also meant Cindy sitting in the back, the last item was-
Yes. You have a couple, you have the appointment of a new director of transportation supervisor, Cindy.
Okay, yep, okay. Did we already do that? Okay, oh, yes.
We just, we just-
Okay, I was looking for that. And with us tonight, we have Cindy Durawitz, who has been just appointed, if you'd like to stand, Cindy, for, as our new transportation director. And we appointed the food service person, if we want to officially, Alyssa, your last-
Alyssa Izer.
Izer, okay. All right. Thank you, and welcome aboard.
We just have like class for...
Okay.
Will you shut up?
Yeah.
Okay, Cindy.
Hi.
That's it. Okay, correspondence for action, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action items A through F. Originally, it was A through E, where there's an F, agenda item, added under that item number.
So...
That's a first and a second? I'm not, sorry, that's a first. Do I have a second? Is that a second? Yes, Len? Okay. And F is the appointment of a hearing officer for a independent hearing that we have to have related to special ed. Any, any discussion?
I have a question. Item C, which is the sewer easement at Slengerlands, that's to fix that issue that we had the break couple-
Yeah, it's very nice that Mr. Nelty's here. He had to work on that probably smelly situation at the end of the year, but this, this easement will help to correct the problem, but if Greg can just explain why the easement is really sought by the town.
The district actually had an existing easement of this sewer that went right through the center of the Slengerlands parking lot. This new easement that we're talking about basically moves the sewer from the inside of the parking lot to the outside in the grassy area. So, this, this will, this is somewhat of a change here, and it goes along the outside.
So, when is the work gonna be done on that?
The work is, is done. I think we were paved today, or paved recently, and then the sidewalk, there was an issue with the gas line. I have Paul Pennman and Monica here from the town.
Okay.
The sidewalk.
The sidewalk was gonna be done when we did the, we did the sidewalk over at the elementary school, I think, a couple weeks ago, and it was gonna be done at the same time. However, we found an issue with existing gas main, it was only a couple inches deep at that location, so we had to have National Grid come in and relocate the gas main. So, we're currently doing a sidewalk project down at Furibush, and we're gonna, contractor when it comes to that sidewalk's gonna do Slengerlands first, but it'll be done before school starts in two weeks, so it'll be the last week of August, the sidewalk will be installed, so.
The, the other sidewalk is, is a new sidewalk on Herrick, right next to Elsmere, at the town.
Right, yep. I actually have another question while you're here. A while back, we had this big board discussion about the Hammagrail easement. What ever happened to them?
They're working on it.
Hopefully, we'll be here at the next meeting.
Okay.
It was origi-, I will tell you, it was originally scheduled to go on tonight.
Uh-huh.
However, we, the district was contacted by Mr. Waldemeyer-
Right.
-which raised a couple questions that we had to have clarified, so we pulled that back at this point. The town is addressing it. I think Greg notified me today that we will have to have our attorney review-
Right.
...and understanding and a sign-off, and once that's done, then we'd be able to entertain moving forward, our recommendation would be to move forward that the town-
Right.
-has met the requirements that we asked back then, but we want to make sure that we do it all the way that it's supposed to be done.
Right, but the timeframe for that, because originally, it was gonna be this summer, the timeframe would be-
During the summer, they'll have to relook at that process.
Next, yeah, okay, okay.
I ask one other side question. The roadwork that's being done in front of the middle school, will there be any impacts at the beginning of the school year?
Well, the closing, Kenwood Avenue, the week of the 23rd, totally closing Kenwood Avenue.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have-
And then working on Cherry Avenue, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we're supposed to negotiate.
Well, Cherry Avenue's a county road.
I know, but they didn't-
And not only that, they're working on that overpass on 85, all at the start of our school. So, our new direct, our new transportation supervisor is, you know, really on top of it, making sure that there won't be an issue.
I can tell you about Kenwood. I can tell you what happened on Kenwood is that we had a major sewer project that was going on, and we were notified by the DOT that they were gonna be paving Kenwood in September, so we had to expedite our sewer project to get done prior to the start of the paving work. So, our plan is to get the work done on Kenwood prior to the end of, end of August. So, the road closure of Kenwood is on the weekend, because DOT doesn't want us to close Kenwood during the week, obviously. So, it's gonna be on a Saturday, and we'll be working on Saturday until the work is done, so it's gonna be a one-day, until the work is done, as long as they have to, to get that work done. And then when DOT, I've been in contact with DOT according to their work, their, that their contract is up to bid, as I understand it, and they're anticipating mid-September work to start, but their paving is planning, may time for paving, so it's gonna be off hours, so it won't be during the day, so.
Well, that's better than what we've been informed, so.
That's what I've been told by DOT, so.
Okay.
I've been in contact with the project manager. If Greg has any questions, I can put it, you should touch the project manager for DOT, but that's as I understand it.
The only thing in regards to the Slengerlands easement that I'll say that we have to work out still, is the fact that although we're moving the easement, the legal, the, the oversight of that existing easement that we will end up terminating, we need to work out who's responsible for collapse or any other issues with it.
Well, Greg and I had talked about it before, was that we maintain the easement, so that in the event there is ever an issue, we're still responsible.
No problem.
That's why we decided-
Yeah, that's all, all we want to make sure, we don't want you to rip up the paving, we'd appreciate it if you put in a new parking lot.
Parking lot used to be just for historical purposes, was very small, because when things, when I first ran for, were pushing for a bigger parking lot, so the easement wasn't really a major concern at that time.
Probably wasn't even in the parking lot at the time, was it?
Right.
Well, just at the beginning, but it was a small part of it, so, but when we expanded-
So, yeah, that, that helps us just make sure that we don't take on something that we really can't necessarily control.
That's why, again, we, we talked about it, we thought the best thought was to leave the existing easement, so if there's ever an issue, we're still responsible for it.
Thank you very much.
I'd say, I, I think I read in the spotlight today about the new pedestrian pattern for Elsmere, which I want to applaud. I believe the kids will not be crossing at a, the lights where they can push the walk light, and now there's a sidewalk for them to walk, and my kids went to Elsmere and I saw for many years that the poor traffic, the crossing guards almost get run down, kids almost get run down, so I just really want to applaud the collaboration between the town and the district and all the work that went into that, that hopefully it's a much safer situation for kids and staff.
Well, it seems more logical to go to the crossing, walk by the light anyhow.
Well, and on top of it, I have to credit the town by putting in the extra, I think it's about 100 feet of sidewalk along Herrick, they actually, I mean, they could've just did the change and had the students have to have a crossing guard right at the corner of Herrick and Del, and Delaware, but the, the nice part, by taking it so that they have to go around the corner, now the crossing guard has about 100 feet of view if anybody's turning, and she's only really trying to cross a 20-foot section versus-
The other issue, the reason that, I believe we looked at, put in the sidewalk all the way down, is that it's actually about 300 feet, is that when people are turning into Herrick, the crossing is past the entrance into the school, so cars will turn left on the Herrick and then turn right into the parking lot, and the crossing's past that entrance into the school, so children will cross after that, but there's still gonna be crossing, there will still be cars going down the street, but there'll be less cars, so that was kind of the idea when we looked at it.
I have, I have one more question about the correspondence for action, but it has nothing to do with easements or parking lots, so.
Yeah.
I noticed that one of the items, I think item D is the first read on two policies. I think those policies are still under review by the policy committee, so before they go for second read, the committee has to get together between this meeting and next meeting, because I think we're still working on some of the wording and-
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about them? Because I used to do a lot of home instruction for the school district, and I always did it in the home. I mean, I never used the public library. The closest I came was one student who had been out ill and then had, middle school student had school phobia, and then I worked with him at the middle school library to get him back into the classroom. And, but I, so I was surprised with the policy saying that that's not, basically not permitted anymore.
We've had a lot of problems with trying to do instruction in the home. There's supposed to be an adult there, there's not always an adult. We've had tutors been in just not good situations, so unless there's a, a reason medically, the student cannot meet in a public venue like the library, which most of them can, or we work on a transition plan, sometimes the, the tutors work with the students even in the building for things like school phobia to get them back in, we do not recommend, nor do our attorneys recommend, that we have tutors go directly to the home, unless there's no other option.
Yeah, because some, in case there were surgery, there were-
Oh, sure.
There was surgery, and then mono was another big one that-
What, what happens is, this policy now puts the control back in our hands a little more. All the changes that you've seen so far are at the recommendation of, of council. So, we have to just meet and talk, just because we do have to get it in place, because we will face this come the first day of school, but we do need the policy committee to get together. However, a lot of the, any type of changes on the council's side will be much more difficult to adjust. I mean, there might be little tweaks, but we really need to follow council.
Right, I'm, I don't disagree with that, I just wondered if, if situations had occurred. I just wondered if situations had occurred.
We do have, yeah, students who are unable to get out of bed, or they're really sick. Sure.
And a lot of times the parents are home, we don't have those type of issues with those students in that situation.
So do we need a policy committee meeting before the next board meeting?
Yep.
Because once it goes to second reading, it becomes a policy.
Right, right. And if you need these in place by the first day of school?
Yep.
Okay.
It's probably a 7:30 meeting, if possible. How's 7:30?
When?
How is 7:30?
You mean 7:30 in the morning, right?
Yeah.
It depends on the day. Wait, who's on policy? I think, are you?
Am I not on anymore?
No, I don't think so. She, she.
So 7:30.
That's why I'm not talking on my phone, but I think she took a 7:30 right now.
5:00 AM is great, too.
Yeah, go for it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number 12, recognition of visitors. At this time, any visitor who would like to address the board on any non-agenda item? Yes, Karen, if you could come up and state your name.
Karen Kissinger. And yes, I realize it's 9:00. I kind of feel like all the high school students should be getting up to sign out. I've got two things. One is the Elsmere playground, fabulous. It looks so much better to have no equipment on it than some of the equipment that was there toward the end. My son, my youngest son was last there six years ago, and there were things they couldn't use. So I applaud the work of the board, and I know the Elsmere community did a lot to raise the money and make that happen. But the real thing I wanted to talk about is Aspen. It looks great so far. I got logged on, I was pleased I could get to it on the iPad. There's two parts of the Aspen system that I, as a parent, and my incoming sophomore are really eager to see implemented, and that is the homework and assignment calendar. With B.C. at Home, we eventually stopped using it altogether, because there were years when maybe one teacher used it. So it was never a reliable source of information for homework, and subsequently, things would get missed. My husband and I wouldn't know to follow up with our sons, they didn't know about it all the time. Anyway, the homework and the assignment piece is critical, because that's how we, as parents, can partner with the teachers, partner in the education of our kids. And I would say even more so than having access to grades more frequently than five weeks. I'm, I'm happy to get grades every five weeks and talk to teachers on a more regular basis if there's some classes that we're more concerned about, but I'm, I'm really hoping that that homework and assignment piece can get implemented as quickly as possible. The other piece that was very frustrating with B.C. at Home was that not every teacher used it for the homework and the assignment, so as I said, we stopped using it. We started off, this is going to be great, and eventually realized we couldn't count on it. So anything you can do, I'm all for mandating teachers to use it. I know it's unpopular, and I know a lot of teachers have concerns about that, but as a parent, unless all teachers use it, I can't rely on it, and my student, my son, can't rely on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen.
I always love participation. I know over the years that B.C. at Home improved, but still, obviously, a lot of teachers did not get on it. But at this point, and that's been a long time, initially, I know people were apprehensive about it, teaching staff, but would you say now with Aspen that there's going to be greater participation?
Well, I mean, I'll let Sal comment, because he's been overseeing all the training, but I would say that the system is much more user-friendly. I think if you just look at how to navigate it, it's much easier for teachers to post information. B.C. at Home was not the most teacher, user-friendly, either on the parent's side or on the teacher's side. So I think that the staff who have been involved in the training, and it's been a significant number of teachers over the last spring and the summer, and will continue, have been very pleased with the system and are, have been in working on the system, moving things over from their websites, blogs they have, teachers who did have stuff on B.C. at Home moving that over. So I think people are, for the most part, excited about the ability to use particularly what Karen commented on, the communication piece. And Sal, let him comment on some of the things he's seen in the trainings.
Not much more to add, but our, we've used two models. First was a turnkey teacher-trainer model, and we opened that up to as many teachers who were interested in participating. We have about 46 teachers, district-wide, K-12, who were interested in becoming turnkey trainers, and that's what Jody alluded to. In the spring and early summer, they were trained. Teacher training started today. We had 55 teachers here. We're offering eight sessions a day, and they arrange from elementary gradebook, secondary gradebook, the, what's called community pages or the teachers' webpages. And then we also came up with an open work session. So this afternoon, I was really encouraged by seeing a bunch of teachers who were coming into Library and Media Center, were having turnkey trainers, staff, an open session where they can begin to explore the use of their classroom pages and, more importantly, their gradebook. And the gradebook does have multiple levels to it, where you do post assignments, and then the, the grading aspect as well. And teachers who may perhaps be a little apprehensive about releasing the grading piece have full discretion over still creating assignments on their calendar and retaining the option to publish grades at a later date. So we really do feel that a combination of the intuitive functionality of the system and the obsessive nature we have with providing professional development, so they're comfortable in using it, and also publicizing to them, there's ongoing support. They're going to have their colleagues within the building, and they're going to have my team to be able to help them over all the obstacles. And we've, today, just a final comment, is we reiterated with them, this is a learning process. We're learning right along with them. We don't have answers to all the questions, but we've had great experience with Aspen as a company supporting us, and we're really confident in knowing and making them realize that we're going to be there right alongside of them so they can be successful with this. And we really do see this as a partnership between the parents, the teachers, Fala, and the district. So we're really encouraged at this point. And I think some of the staff who have either significant others or experiences with other districts are hearing what some of the possibilities are as well. So we're really encouraged at this point. As far as metrics, we'll be able to report back to you after school starts on how, how we're making out.
Thank you, Al, and Sal. Also, don't we have a policy on grading? And do we need to modify that policy so that we put something in there that, that Aspen is required to be used? If that's, it's a choice of the board?
The grading policy last year was updated with the change in the elementary report cards, but it's still, I believe, says in there five and 10 weeks, so I don't know from that perspective.
But I'm just saying, if, maybe that policy should be looked at to say if we need any modifications to it, to make it the district's policy that Aspen is the, you know, management system that the district uses, and then again, policies are to be followed?
Is there an expectation about the use set?
There are implied spirit and letter of the law expectations. With anything, you want to build collaboration before dictation. So I think we're at that collaborative stage which we've been at over the past year. I think you have to be very careful, because you are also dealing with collective bargaining agreements. And at any time, a collective bargaining agreement, and I've never experienced that year, but could potentially shut down any process. We have been very good, I think, at navigating those waters. We are trying to focus on communications for this year, and also build successes, which were not necessarily implemented fully with B.C. at Home, because you just couldn't support it ongoing, especially when budgetary implications started to play in and update, where we're dealing with a national-type program with supports of a company that are marketing it that way, which makes it a little easier. So I think we have to proceed as steadfast as we've been, but also understand that we have to work within a collective bargaining agreement.
Can I ask a question, though? Kind of going to Matt's question. If something is in a policy of the district that's adopted by the Board of Education, that, how, how does that interact with, if that is something that then a collective bargaining agreement doesn't want to do?
And that's a good question, because what happens is some people say, if you set policy, it must happen. Policy cannot override other laws that are on the book, and the Taylor Law, which establishes collective bargaining rights, would trump any policy if you invade on its rights. So we would always seek legal counsel. So we have to be very careful when you set policy that you don't overstep the intention.
Right, but we still could make a statement about the board's support of something, and I, I kind of like Matt's idea of, you know, making an amendment to our grading policy that talks about the, the district's desire to use district-supported management tools to promote, you know, the avail, the, you know, the gray, or facilitate a positive grading process or something, you know?
I would think there'd be a lot more support now, though. I mean, when we started out with B.C. at Home, I mean, it was totally new, no, I mean, some people were doing something already because individually they wanted to as a teacher, but, you know, it was new, it was different, it was cumbersome, and, you know, we couldn't say everybody had to do it, but it made it difficult, because parents, you know, some teachers did it, some teachers didn't.
We need explorer.
But we've come all, you know, kind of another digital generation at this point, and it just seems like.